Welcome to the Essex Board of Selectmen meeting, October 20th, 2025. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast by 1623, and recordings are available usually by the end of the week. All right, I'm gonna move to the Town Administrator's Report.
First item on the report tonight has to do with, just to recap, of the Manchester Essex Regional School District Building Committee public forum that was held. I believe all three of you did attend that, and generally speaking, the Building Committee is still looking at three options: either renovation or replacement at the current site, 12-story street, a new school at 30 Apple Street, or an addition over at the Manchester Memorial School. And when you look at those various options for locations, there are also different permutations of grades that will be, that could be in those buildings. I don't know if the Board had anything else they wanted to discuss about it. I just wanted to give the opportunity.
Annie, I was just gonna ask you, is it still three options? Did they remove the Apple Street option?
I think, from what I understand, Teresa wanted to talk to this Board about Apple Street and some of the conversations that came out after the meeting. But the site development costs, not on the site necessarily, but getting to the site are of concern, just because you'd have to bring utilities to the site. There may be need to improve the road sidewalks, maybe one or both of the bridges. So, all of those factors, you know, you need to consider funding it, bringing them to Town Meeting, what has to happen before you even get to the site, to even do the work. So, that's of concern, and Teresa's gonna come to us tonight, I think, and discuss it, but I don't know. We did a straw poll at the end of the last Building Committee meeting to see if anyone wanted to continue to pursue Apple Street, and no one did. But she's gonna come to this committee to talk about.
And did we look at the pros and cons? I mean, I know that the con is the additional infrastructure structure to get there, but as far as the size of the lot, the dryness of the lot, would it be able to give more field space if you wanted? Would it be able to give you different playgrounds so you didn't have to? I'm just trying to...
Yeah, if you look at the minutes from that meeting, Gordon Brewster, you know Gordon, is an architect on the committee, said, you know, "You've got a flat, dry spot here." You know, that it's great, but the problems are, do they outweigh bringing all of that? And the delay in waiting for us, the Town of Essex, to vote on all of the things that would need to happen in order to make Apple Street happen.
Does anybody have any rough costs yet?
No. No, and that's...
Because we don't know what it's gonna cost at the existing site, either.
Right.
You know, and, I mean, maybe it's more, I have no idea. I wouldn't think so, but maybe it is, I don't know.
And maybe that's the message that this Board gives to Teresa when she comes to talk to us about, you know, what further meat you want to justify removing that from the site. But I have to tell you, the getting, just getting there is...
Right, for sure.
Is costly, and I just want you to also think about the timeliness. You need, you have 900 and some days to get from when we approved the schematic, or the feasibility study, to, you know, to finish it for MSBA meeting their deadline. And then, okay, so how do we get all that stuff done? And then, there's the delay every year of, what is it, 5% escalation? And I'm not sure that 5% is the number.
Probably more.
Okay, okay.
That's what we've seen.
Don't scare everybody. But, you know, every year that you wait, right, you increase the cost. So, I think there's just some real concerns about that.
It'd just be nice to have some, you know, 10,000-foot estimates, just so that, you know, at least you have something other than, oh yeah, that's gonna be more expensive.
Yeah, some data to give, yeah, perfect. Thanks.
All right, the next item just has to do with the draft Housing Production Plan. The Affordable Housing Trust has been working with Metropolitan Area Planning Council to develop that plan. Since it's a large document, we wanted to get it out early to the Selectmen and to the Planning Board, which we've done. The Affordable Housing Trust will meet in the middle of November to review the same draft that I have sent around to you. And they may make changes, they may not. If there are any changes, you'll be apprised of that, and the Planning Board as well. Then, in December, at your second meeting in December, on the 15th, you will be holding a public hearing on potential adoption, and the Planning Board will be with you in that same meeting to adopt the Housing Production Plan.
And approximately, do we share the document for the public? I mean, I know our Boards are looking at it, but can the public...
If the public wants to see it at this point, if anyone does, they can contact me.
I haven't made it past about page five.
Yeah, and so we just wanted to provide an early view for you.
Could I ask you a question about that? So, you're saying that the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen kind of handled the feedback on that, not the Affordable Housing Trust?
Affordable Housing Trust makes a recommendation to forward it to those two Boards. And the two that meet in December jointly get to decide if there's any changes that should be made. And if there are, you can approve it as revised, right then and there, and then MAPC will go make the final changes, and then it will be a final document.
So, the Trust is signing off on it before they give it to us?
They're recommending it. But the way that it works under the state rules is that the Planning Board and the Selectmen actually have to be the ones to approve it for the community. The next is Vehicle Fleet summaries. Selectman Cameron brought up the fact that, you know, we could start looking at all of the vehicles in the town, since most of them are specialty and most of them are costly. So, we could start determining, in a more detailed sense than what we're currently offering, when we expect vehicles to roll off and have to be replaced. We have collected that information from the three departments that have these vehicles, Fire, Police, and DPW. And tonight, I just wanted to introduce it for discussion. I think, Annie, you were talking about maybe our office could compile the data, because they're not in the same format.
Yeah. Yeah, I was hoping that we could put it in one spreadsheet, and then have it be filterable?
Just to have worksheets that have the different departments.
Okay, so, do you want each had to have a tab, or...
It's called a worksheet, but yes.
But do you want each one to have its own tab?
I think so, because we never know. To keep the departments separate and not have them melt together. Sometimes vehicles go from a DPW over to the Fire Department, or... So, that's why I'm saying...
Well, you could have a summary worksheet as well, so that you could see all the data together.
I just wanna filter it.
Because if you're looking at years and things like that, and costs.
Yes.
So, where do these estimated timeframes for the life of the vehicle come from? Is that standard in the business of DPW, Fire, Police, or is it...
They know, like, they know when you come up on so many miles for Police, for example, the vehicles are gonna have a lot of problems. For the Fire Department, I think it has to do with strict reliability, right? That thing has to roll, has to work. And they go about five years for an ambulance, a lot longer for a piece of fire apparatus. So, yeah, we're largely getting the information from each of the departments who have managed... Yeah, managed these types of vehicles over the years.
And so, this is not something we had done in the past? Is it something that we did informally?
It is, it is. So, each department does provide the Finance Committee with its five-year needs, and that's published in the Town Meeting booklet every year. This would be a more detailed summary, because you can get beyond the five years. Some of these vehicles are beyond that, but then if you're looking out on the horizon, you'd be able to see those ones as well. It's not a big deal to put it together, we can put it together.
Yeah, and I don't think that the list that was in the Town Meeting booklet actually had everything that was noted in...
And that's, I think you're right, and I think it will be good to go back to the departments with this information and show them, when you get the call for capital replacements, have it this detailed, so that the information coming back to the Finance Committee, and that it gets published, can be accurate.
Yeah, and it'd be nice to be able to look at what we've got coming and say, "Okay, so we've got so much here, maybe next year we're gonna take this much in excess and put it in this fund to fund these things," right?
Yeah, so I can, if the Board wants, I can, we can get that put together for the next time.
Thank you, that was really nice to get all this.
Let's see, how are we doing on time for the appointment?
We've got four minutes.
Okay, a couple minutes. The Superintendent of Public Works position vacancy, we do have applications rolling in. We haven't seen anything that has been quite on point yet, but applications are gonna remain open until the position is filled. The Board of Public Works has not come forward to suggest that they want to have a preliminary screening committee, but I think I can have more discussion with them once we compile additional applicants and we have the whole pool, and hopefully they're willing to continue that discussion.
How long will we leave it open?
I think we wanna leave it open for 30 days, because that's really the life of some of these advertisements that we've done, and these association...
So, it would repost if we didn't find anything that we liked?
Yeah, and you might have to go with an interim.
Can I just ask one question? Are they, have you apprised that committee of kind of like, what are the laws in public hiring practices? Just so that everybody's aware of kind of like, what's protocol and what's not?
Right. Well, regardless of whether they go with a preliminary screening committee or not, yes, I'm going to be working directly with the Chairman when they start sorting through the applications and setting up interviews, because it's very important, of course, that it gets done properly and nobody's rights are violated. So, I will be doing that with them.
Yeah, that's messy and complicated.
Yeah.
It's good to have guidance.
The, you wanna go, okay, the tennis courts. I just wanted to say that we are going forward on the 28th of October with the notice of intent to the Essex Conservation Commission for the tennis court plan that includes post-tensioned concrete slabs, a wider footprint that requires moving the drive out towards the baseball field, and between, I think it's between six inches and almost two feet of fill. The, that's one alternative. On the other end, and I know we have some folks here tonight that wanna talk about it, you could simply grind the footprint that's in place right now, and then put what I was told by Weston and Sampson, level it out with like six inches of fill, and put a new paved surface on top of that and replace the fence and any ADA requirements. And that's gonna be closer to $450,000. The difference, though, is you wouldn't be treating the sub-base if you did that, and if there are still settling problems in that particular area, you could pave it and have it not last as long as another solution. And it will come down to really what the Selectmen discuss, where you wanna go with it, what you wanna bring to Town Meeting, input from people that are interested in it. It can go in either direction, but for purposes of permitting, we're going with the largest disturbance, get that permitted. And if it gets, if the scope gets scaled back down again, we'd have to go back to the Conservation Commission for an amendment.
There's no way to determine what the settling conditions might be without borings, is that correct?
Right, and we decided not to do that, because if you do the borings, you have to have the money to deal with the disposal of the material, and we don't.
Yeah, and it's a crapshoot, potentially.
Yeah, we don't know what's there.
I just had some feedback from folks who just said, you know, "It seems like we're looking at the Cadillac when what we really just want is a Ford." And so, I think proponents don't wanna have this very, very ultra-expensive solution. So, it's hard when that number is out there and floating. People think, "Oh, they're asking for this very, very expensive solution" when they just want a very basic tennis court.
But if you get cracks showing up within five years or so, then...
Yeah, I mean, you know...
Especially when, even with the lower...
When you're dealing with subsurface stuff, as we know from the Streetlight Project, if you don't get the information and you don't plan for it, and look at all the other avenues, what you choose and go ahead with may or may not be the wisest thing. But at the end of the day, that's a policy decision for the Board of Selectmen.
And that, I mean, is there anybody that could give us that? If we just did this grinding, you know, the lower option?
Yeah, they're $450,000.
Yes, no, I know, the price, I'm talking as far as...
The settling?
It's settling.
Guarantee?
I mean, because if it was five years, you're talking $100,000 out the door a year.
Yeah, they're not gonna be able to give you that. They might be able to do it if you bring it to construction and you figure into the construction project some additional geotech testing, some borings, and some money there to deal with anything that turns up. But if you find that, at that point, if you're gonna go for the narrower scope and you find that the news isn't good, now you've got this thing all teed up to go, and it may be, you know, not the best foundation.
How long can they guarantee the post-tensioned concrete slabs, though, from cracking?
They said that it's gonna be beyond 20 years, probably 30.
Oh, okay.
Because they go up and down as a unit, they don't...
Right.
And as always, my concern is, I'm not a pickleball person, but if pickleball started to play there, then we could end up with a lawsuit from neighbors. Okay, so we have an appointment tonight. Katie, sorry, can't see that with my glasses on.
Hi, Katie Montgomery, on behalf of the Essex Historical Society and Shipbuilding Museum. I am here tonight regarding a proposal to lease the property known as Zero Main Street, or the Municipal Shipyard of 1668, from the Town of Essex to the museum for the purpose of stewardship and maintenance. Should I go on?
Question, was the, was it designated as a municipal shipyard when it was owned by the Town of Essex?
Yes, in 1668.
Yeah, so way back then?
Yeah.
So, I did ask Brendan to do some research as to what are some of our options. And I heard, you know, I heard some things, you know, some, from the Harvard Master thinking, "Oh, I think it's a great idea." But unfortunately, I don't wanna say, "Yes, let's just go ahead and do this, and then have it come back to bite us." So, Brendan, did you have that information of the different options?
So, there are really, there are really a few options that the Board could look at here. If the museum or any party wants to use that landing, let's say, for a future launch or construction of something in that area, you could approve that on a case-by-case basis. That's kind of the minimum. You could go all the way to Town Meeting and get a lease, which I think is what you're asking for, which is the most durable solution for the museum. Or you could do something in the middle, which would be like a license. So, for instance, the town enjoys a license for Paglia Park. The people who own the property license it to the town. The town, as you know, just gave a license to the Shipyard Tavern for dumpster storage on our property. In return, the town is getting the use of the dumpster and maintenance of the public access area that's adjacent to the restaurant. There's a license in place right now with what used to be the Village, now the James, where the town gets to have people go up and down the stairs to the parking lot and across the James property. And in exchange, the James gets to use a little piece of the town's property for, that happens to be part of its parking lot. So, it's a type of an arrangement you could, you could look at in this situation. You may wanna put terms and conditions on what it could be used for and when, et cetera. So, it, with a license, it definitely is non-exclusive, meaning if the town ever wanted some, to use that for something else, even at the same time, that could be entertained. And the town, of course, with a license, can cancel the license within so many days in accordance with its terms. So, it's more flexible than a lease, as far as the owner of the property is concerned.
If there's contamination found on it, say the shipyard does something and finds, and there's contamination, we're responsible under a lease, correct?
Well, it depends on what the terms of the lease or the license have to say. And we're the owner of the property, and if there's contamination on the property, the owner definitely has a stake in that. And so, you do not want to create a liability. We would have to have Town Council look at the language of the lease, if it was gonna be a lease, or even a license, if you're gonna authorize more than just casual use of the property.
Also, if we did do a license or a lease, I'd like to entertain a right-of-way for boaters to launch when they pull in there onto Shipyard property to back up and get down the ramp, I mean, as they're doing now. But it would be nice to formalize that.
Make it official, yeah. And there would be the benefit to the town and the townspeople for allowing a third party to utilize that property.
So, remind me again, is it the lease that would require a Town Meeting vote?
Yes, it would require a Town Meeting vote.
And a license or a case-by-case approval would not?
That's right, that's a Selectmen's purview.
I'm confused. The lease that we have with the shipyard...
It's a license, there's no lease there.
Oh, it's a license, okay.
There is a lease in place for a portion of the landing across from Woodman's that Shay's, the Shay's Restaurant building. The corner of the building sits on it.
Right.
And every 10 years, Town Meeting votes to whether or not they want to extend that. There's also a lease, it happens to be with the Historical Society and Museum for the Schoolhouse building. And we go through a request, or for proposals on that. If it's a lease, you can't just say it's for this organization. You can write the conditions on it so that a particular strain of organizations, if you will, would have a better outcome. But with a license, you can pretty much customize it, and it does not require Town Meeting.
And is that, you can terminate it, you set a termination date?
Or you could say that at any time, at any time.
Yeah, or any time.
Yeah, within so many days, we would give notice, and that would be the end of it.
And I don't see any, I mean, I think that what Katie is talking about, trying to do with the stewardship and to be able to have boats built, I think it's all great, I'm just a little, I don't like to sell town land. I would rather be able to have some control over it, because I just also don't want just anybody pulling in and launching out of that, that...
But that wouldn't be the intention, and it wouldn't be, they wouldn't be able to do that, because they would have to drive through our lot. Like, it's, that lot is pretty landlocked by us. And we've successfully leased the Schoolhouse for, you know, since 1976. And all we wanna do is be able to clean it up. It's really derelict, people assume it belongs to us already, and we get messages, "Why don't you do something about that? Why do you leave it looking like a dump?" And we're like, "Well, it's not ours, we don't have the right to do that." So, this is a remedy to that.
So, Katie, I do wanna ask you, there are two or three boats already in that path. Are those belonging to the shipbuilders? Are they belonging to private individuals?
They belong to the Shipbuilding Museum, built by schoolkids. And they're not launched there, they're just stacked.
Was, I took a picture, there was one with a motor on it, so I don't think it's stacked.
Oh, that's in the water, below the tide line, that was being used.
Oh, it may have been low tide when you took the picture.
It was low tide when I took the picture. But even so, is that part of your property that you're using? Or is it somebody else is just pulling their boat there?
No, that's our, that's our property.
Okay.
May I ask some questions?
Absolutely.
So, my understanding is the proposal that they have made is to do three things, which is, now I can't see it.
It's right here.
Sorry. Routine maintenance, interpretive signage, and preserve public access. But it's only to the actual, there's no boat ramp posted there, there's, I mean, there's no... So, those are the only three things that they're asking to do. Anything beyond that would have to come back to us for permission, or...
You would specify whether it was a license or a lease, you would specify the terms and conditions. And anything that wasn't allowed on its face, there would have to be a modification to, in order to do something different, yes.
So, I guess, Mike, that goes to your question about digging or disturbing soils or anything. Doesn't look like they're asking to do any of that, is that correct? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
What would you describe as maintenance?
Dealing with the invasive phragmide, so just cutting that down. We'd have to work with the Conservation Commission to figure out what the best method of mitigation it is. But it's an invasive plant that's overtaking the marsh, and there's a huge crop effect right there. There are some approved methods in the industry, but it would all have to go through CONCOM for a plan to be developed. The first thing we would probably do is just cut it down with blessing, and then go forward from there.
So, does it matter to you if it's a lease or a license?
A lease makes it easier for us to deal with, because we're experienced in that. We already lease a property from the town. A license from the town isn't something I'm familiar with. So, I would have to, you know, look into what, how that would affect the organization differently. This is really straightforward, our stewardship of the Schoolhouse has been really straightforward. We've taken care of that property at no cost to the town for a really long time. And it seems to be a successful method. There's no, you know, the town seems happy, we're happy. There's, it's usable for the public, there's no real downside there. I don't know how a license would change that. And then the Shipyard itself, in this historic designation, I believe you could still build a boat there if you pulled the permit with the Town of Essex, and that's happened in the past. We don't intend to restrict it from anybody else using it, right? Like, that's not the point. The point is to make it cleaned up, safe, interpreted, you know, extend our insurance to the site. So, I think it would be a win-win. I don't know the mechanics of the license and how that would change those, the ability to do those things. Like, I don't think I could, I don't know if I could get insurance on something that I had licensed rather than leased, like, long-term.
You can, we have other people that, in other licenses, where their insurer becomes involved. Now, it says preserve public access. Right now, does the public actually have access to it? Beyond walking through the phragmites?
Not really, you can walk through the phragmites. But people do walk through the phragmites.
But as far as getting to that area that's accrued landing, they would have to walk across the private property to get to it anyway, right?
Yeah, but they kinda do anyway.
Okay, so that's, that's the type of thing a license could do. It could help formalize that so that there isn't any guesswork? "Yeah, I'm gonna go to the town's landing, and I know that since the two parties have arranged for this, that I can walk across this and get to that without feeling like I'm trespassing," or whatever. So, there are different things that could be considered. The, the lead... The, the lease is more durable, and it usually allows an organization to feel more comfortable spending money, because it's not subject to being truncated in, in a short amount of time. But that, that does take the town meeting to authorize.
Town meeting, and I think that with the lease, it's, it's, you're not building a boat to be a building there, you're building a boat to, to launch, and the lease still could be something that we could have done before the end of the year, correct? Because it does not take a town.
License.
I'm sorry, a license.
Yes, yes.
Can I ask a follow-up question to your question, which was about, can you foresee, and this is just kind of, could you foresee any issues with people backing, you know, the backing up question? You know, would there ever be a situation where that would become problematic?
So that, them backing up where they do now is, has nothing to do with that land at all? So, and.
Only when they have an event, or they have something going on in there, then people wouldn't do that, because it's, there's no place for them to do it, yeah.
But if it's not, if it's not inherently a safety problem or a conflict, again, that's the type of thing you could formalize. The museum's getting access by this license to, for these purposes, but then things like backing up, or somebody walking across the museum's property to get to the landing are, are anticipated and not guesswork.
Yeah, but this is really just us doing a service to the town, like, we're not getting anything from it. It's the fact that it needs to happen, like, it is completely derelict land, it's overgrown, it looks terrible, and we're, we're trying to, you know, be good citizens by, that's like, it's an easier lift for us to do that than probably anybody else, because it's right there.
But, well, the issue of contamination, though, is, is one that we can't just overlook. Because if you go in there and do something, and volunteers are in there, and something gets pulled, and all of a sudden there's something to look at that we didn't know about, we're into a different situation.
And phragmities, you know, oftentimes in a situation like that, you know, it's a very robust root structure, as long as, you know, you know, the, you're reticent to the fact that you may be treating it every single year. I mean, the best thing to do would be treat it, get it out of there, and then dig up all the roots, but you dig up all the roots, and then what happens? You know, I mean, that could be problematic, so I don't think the town would want that, you know, it to be dug up at all, even though that's maintenance for phragmities. So it's something to consider.
Can I propose this next step? And that is that you maybe document the difference between a lease and a license, so that, that you can take it to your stakeholders, and then maybe come back with what your suggestion is, or you kind of work it out, and then we discuss it or design it a different time? Because I don't think it sounds like we're definitive on lease or license if we did it. Is that correct? Would I, is that a fair assessment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe, maybe informally discuss with the Conservation Commission, you know, what they would recommend for managing the phragmities on that property.
Yeah, I figured we would wait until we had worked that out before we put the time and energy into.
No, but just an informal discussion with them.
And, and is there a way, if, if we did a lease, 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 that we could make it so that they are responsible for?
Even with a license, yeah. And we don't want to, we don't want to do anything that's going to change the way that plot of land is managed without having some kind of liability clause. Because if it's, unless you were very comfortable with, you know, you're cutting it at a certain place, and, but once you have people in an area doing things, that could disturb the area, and then you're into something that you don't want to be dealing with, at least not right now.
Do we know that there's any, is there any history there that's problematic, like?
Chipmunk?
No, I know that, but I mean, is it paint, you know?
It's paint.
It is, okay.
It's metals.
There was on the, on your property, correct?
Yeah, our property's been remediated.
Okay.
We don't know for sure what's still left on the town piece, and changing the way that it's managed might have issues for the town.
Yep.
You know, i- is it something, you know, is it something you want to look at first?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, it sounds, it sounds like regardless of lease or license, there'll probably be some clause in there about responsibility for contamination, which might be a deal breaker for you, I don't know.
Well, I, you know, I'm speaking for an organization, I have to bring everything to my board of directors.
Yeah.
So I can't say what a deal breaker is or not.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the big you, in your board.
Yeah, well, and that would, I would have to discuss that with them to figure out what they think. But I, if the town thinks that that land is contaminated, maybe you guys should think about cleaning it up, because it, we'd rather not be bleaching contaminants into the marsh either way.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know, we just know that historically, there's a chance of it. And so moving into, okay, we're going to use this land, or this land's going to be physically managed a little bit differently, we can't discount that possibility. And that's why it's important that we don't just charge into it and then find out that we weren't ready for something. Like I said, you, maybe the, maybe the town wants to have someone look at it, I don't know. It's been that way for a long time now.
So even if we decided, because I, I guess I'm leaning towards into a license, so that we don't have to go to town meeting. But I do believe you'd still be able to go to the COMCOM to see whether or not the cutting of the phragmities is.
Whatever the method.
Yeah, whatever.
Sure, it would be, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I'd prefer to go to town meeting, because I'd like the town to know that this is our intention, and, you know, it's, it's a group effort, it's a village, and we're all here together. So I, I mean, I don't think it's that much of a burden for me to get up and do the same talk in front of everybody.
I am, I mean, I think it would be great if you could take that property and make it, improve it. I think that's great, I think it's just about what's the vehicle we're going to use to, to do that. So we've got time.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, we have another 30 minutes before the board meeting. Do you want to go back to the public safety building?
So the next item on my report has to do with the siding shingles on the public safety facility. The board is in receipt of a report from our consultant, Copeland, and Copeland has determined that there are deficiencies in the way that those shingles were applied to the building. With respect to them, the coating that was put on the shingles, I'm still working with our former project manager, our architect, and with the contractor to get to the bottom of exactly what was applied, and the paper trail that connects a request to use a certain product with an approval to use that product.
Approval by the town?
Yeah, well, by the town's, by the town's architect.
Architect.
Not the town.
Not the project manager.
Town's architect.
Yeah.
And the architect would have said, okay, yes, you can use this product, and you apply it this way, and you have to follow all these, you know, manufacturer requirements. If the stain is prematurely peeling off, then I think we should talk to the contractor about that. Because that's different than warranty. If it was, if it was not put on, or they chose, they put on the wrong product, we need to talk further with them about that. On the other hand, if the product that was put on was properly applied, and its life expectancy is, is only, say, five years, well, then there isn't much to talk about.
Right.
So it's still, it's still something we're wading through, so that we can get all the players, proper players to talk about it, make sure we identify exactly what happened, and then go from there.
But we have, we do have funds, correct? This is the one we have an actual substantial amount in, still open.
Right, we do.
But, but why would we use our funds if we used our funds to have it done in the first place? And just, I'm just looking at what would be, the information from other section, and then what the findings were? It doesn't seem like they did things according to what was supposed to.
Well, certainly some of them, I mean, the, the peeling is the biggest issue, but there are other issues, the other issues, like the overlap of the shingles and the cracking, is that significant? Or is it just?
And that's what we would have to address, and try to get down to that with, you know, because why would the, the architect have signed off on this? They're the ones who's supposed to know about the, the overlapping and the, you know, all the different things that they brought up.
Yeah.
Did we hire a commissioning agent to commission the building at the end, or what about the OPM? What's their liability here?
Uh, the OPM is less liable than the architect, who had the clerk of the works, and is supposed to be an expert watching what's going on.
But did we do, you remember, Alba, we had a commissioning in the building, I'm talking about the high school, in middle school, or memorial school, we had a commissioning?
But was that project manager at risk?
Yeah.
That's a whole different thing.
Oh, that's great.
And, and so for me, I, I think that we do need to go dig deeper to find.
Get all the facts, get all the facts.
But I also don't want to get into lawsuits and all this stuff that just is wasting money, then let's just fix it and get it.
Well, you have to weigh what you're, we have to weigh, right? You have to see, what does it cost to pursue this versus?
And the problem with it is, they're saying that unless you replace the shingles outright, you're going to be coming back every three to five years to restain the shingles.
Or grind them down and then stain it, stain it soaks in.
Right, properly.
But even then, I mean, what he said was, I thought, that it's insufficient to only stain the exposed part of the shingle, that the understanding was that the entire shingle was supposed to be stained. So this is very frustrating, I mean, do we have a war, like, what's the warranty?
It's not a war, it wouldn't be a warranty issue, we would just determine that, that they did it wrong, that's different. Warranty is you did it right, and.
And the product's not failing.
It failed.
Yep.
Doing it wrong is not, not the same thing.
Do we ju, when did we realize they did it wrong? And is, is the delay in acting on it going to count against us?
Not until about a year ago.
Okay.
And we actually put it out to bid, to see what it would cost to do that, and some other things that are involved with the building, including that roof.
Yeah.
And nobody bid on it, because it's our understanding that, that people don't generally like to come in and work on something that has already failed, and take the risk that they'll, they won't be able to get to the bottom of it.
So it could end up being re-shingling the whole thing.
And if you're going to do that, why wouldn't you just put up either Hardy, or, or even the new vinyl that looks like wood?
Yeah.
And never have to touch it again. And that's, in fact, what we had specified in the bid documents. But again, nobody bid on it, because it was bundled with the roof, and that's really what they don't want to go and touch.
Yeah.
You know, you could go back out to bid just for the siding. It's, it's not going to be cheap, but it's, it would be a permanent solution.
Yeah.
And you have the money.
Yeah.
So I, I'm going to keep working on getting all the facts straightened out, so that the board can talk about this again.
Thank you, Brennan.
Appreciate it.
Now, the port security grant for the new Harbor Master boat, at the last meeting, there was discussion about whether the Harbor Master would be modifying the specification. In speaking with the Harbor Master, they're not looking to modify the specification appreciably. If they want to put this davit on there, that is like a lifting device, they think that there are other minor things that are in the spec that could be swapped out for that. So we're not looking at any wholesale changes, and so I'm going to recommend that the board vote to accept the grant, and then our town planner can go in and officially do that online.
Even if they won't do the swap, we'd just pay for it ourselves?
Yeah, because it's not, it's not, we're not talking about enough, enough money here to worry about.
Okay, so I'm going to entertain a motion to accept the port security grant for the new Harbor Master boat.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the final item in the report is the MOU for regional sheltering. The board wanted a little more time to review that, and so I've brought it back to you tonight. And I, again, I'm, I'm still recommending that the board sign the MOU, so that we can stay involved with this effort from the beginning.
So moved.
So I'm going to make a motion to accept the, to sign the regional MOU for the regional sheltering.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's it for my report.
I did have a couple of questions that, from your report. So there was the, the talk about the monthly pothole report?
Yes.
Is there any documentation or somewhere online where somebody can see that and see, oh, somebody already reported that pothole?
Not online. If they called the Department of Public Works, they could say, you know, I'm reporting this, and if it was a repeat, hopefully they would either, if it was in close proximity to it time-wise, they would either be already fixing it, or they'd be saying it tomorrow, it's going to be filled. Is it online? No.
I just, I've had multiple people say to me, I've reported this three times, I'm getting no response, they're not coming to fix it. This was last season. So I just would say, like, wouldn't it be great if it was online, where somebody can go, oh, that pothole on blah blah street is, is already documented?
Well, it's interesting, because if you look through the pothole reports that I've gotten over the past several years, there's almost never any.
That's where my concern is.
On the log. So if people are reporting potholes, and they're not putting it on the log, I don't, I, I don't know how to really deal with that.
I haven't seen one in, the whole time I've been on the board.
I can only think of like, two or three times.
Yeah.
And I don't know what, what's, you know, I'm not a DPW person, what's technically a pothole, and what's technically a crack in the, I mean.
Right.
So, if we could, I don't know, I'll think about it some more, and I might bother you about it.
Yeah, all right.
Okay. So we have 15 more minutes, do we want to go down to other business? And we're going to make, I'm going to make a motion to, entertain a motion to approve the weekly warrant in the amount of $1,4,606.98.
Six hundred and four.
Six hundred and four.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And make a motion to approve the minutes for the Selectman's October 6, 2025, open meeting and executive session?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I think the town, the default, the town meeting stuff, I think, will take longer. So I'm going to go down to the, the authorize an order for the new police cruiser to replace an old cruiser with old vehicle and trade-in, using the apportionment for the 2025 annual town meeting.
That's this thing, right?
That's that.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did we want to talk about, it came in at 64,000, I think was, 70,000 was authorized, is that correct?
The fall town meeting, I think it was a, not quite a round number, do you know, chief, what it was? I think it was 60-something.
Good evening, so the quote from what was appropriated in the Springtown meeting?
Yes, that's what we're ordering this vehicle with, correct?
Correct, that was 69 and change, and then after the vehicle trade of the 2018 Charger, it knocked it down to 64, I believe. Is the trade included on that quote that you have?
It is, it's the last line.
Yeah, and the total was 64-something, and I just wanted to know what was authorized.
Yeah, so there'll be about $5,000 roughly that you're not spending.
Correct, and we usually keep that for like, the new radios or any other equipment that is needed, because they, they do factor in the trade, but the trade's always the wild card of how much you're going to get on trade.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we have, um, I'm going to make a motion to approve the retiree health benefit insurance renewal rates for the calendar year 2026.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Can we have some discussion of this?
You can.
So this is for retiree health insurance?
Yes. Um, that runs on a calendar year cycle, whereas the active runs on a fiscal year cycle.
Okay, and can you just give some color to this? You've given us this, um, but-
So this is actually, when we talk about OPEB, other post-employment benefits, this is retiree health insurance. And so the goal of the town over time is that the town's portion of this insurance is actually covered by interest on investments. And we're making good ground on that. Um, of a $5 million goal, we have about 2 million to go, but there's more than 3 million in the fund right now. Uh, the rates this year are largely being driven by prescription drug prices in the marketplace as well as medical trend being higher than average. And in fact, back in May, when the active insurance was renewed um, for the July 1 start, it was a higher than, than, you know, than, than usual. And the school saw the same thing.
Yep.
It's, it's medical trend right now.
Yeah. I guess my concern is that we have this thing happening at the federal level and, um, I know that I find about my renewals, you know, the rates in, you know, what is open enrollment. So I think we'll all have a surprise in November. And I just wanted to know how this is guaranteed, right? This is not going to change.
That will not change for the calendar year starting on January 1st.
Yeah, and these are not great increases, but they're manageable, right?
Yes, and we, we looked at our budget.
Yeah.
And we're not even going to have to come to town meeting to ask to put more in that line.
Yeah.
Even though it's a mid-year thing, right? And we don't know about it when we set the budget.
Yeah.
Because of the way it works with the calendar year. Um, but we've already reviewed it and we, we're okay, even with those increases.
And do we have an idea of what the number of retirees already currently? Because we know that we have two more coming on line this year, right? Or for next year?
It will be, but I don't have those numbers at my fingertips. So I can get you that, I'll send it to you from the, from the treasury.
I was just curious.
And if you look at these increases, and I'm not trying to pin you down on any statement, but this is, is this in any way a predictor of what the town's rates will be? Or is this, don't, don't try to do that?
I, I believe that it is and it's not necessarily because retiree health insurance predicts active. It's, it's simply because we were told at the beginning of this cycle for, for July 1 that we should expect to see about two to three years of higher-than-average increases.
Okay.
And, and some of it has to do with, uh, the, there was a cap put on prescription drugs, like the amount that that person has to pay.
Mm-hmm.
And they can no longer, and, and the federal government shifted all that risk out, so they're no longer paying for it. And so, yes, you might only have to pay the 35 bucks, but your premium went up.
Right.
So no one lied, right? Your, your co-pay was where they said it was going to be. But the only way to actually absorb the, um, the cost, since the federal government isn't doing it, is to put the, put the plan premium up. And that's part of what you see there.
Yeah, okay. Thanks. There was, I, this, I'm sorry, this was just kind of general information.
Yeah, and you have, you had signed that one already?
I had signed it, it's in the packet.
Okay, good.
Did we vote on this yet?
No.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next item is to ratify the chairman's signature of the Title III-B funding agreement in the amount of $2,000 from the senior care to the Essex Senior, sorry, Essex Council on Aging to help with council addressing housing needs.
So moved.
Is it housing needs?
Yes.
Second, can we discuss what this is?
Yeah.
Um, so for discussion, I, I'm sorry, I thought it was for programming.
They say it is.
Okay, so it's for programming for housing needs. Okay, never mind.
No, I want to know what the answer is.
So basically, because I was at the council on aging meeting, um, it's to put, put together programs so that they can help seniors who may have issues with housing needs.
Okay.
Okay?
So programming is bringing people in to help inform people or provide strategies?
And there was a requirement that the, the town approved this prior to the date of your meeting year.
And the other thing is, is that they, this grant that they got, they may be able to go after it again. And, um, right now, the council on aging, um, they have to pay, they got 2,000 and they have to put in 500. So the friends of the council, Essex Council on Aging put in 250 and then the council on aging is putting in 250.
Okay.
So it just, it could come back again and that's why they want to just make sure that they, um, in this, the senior, um, the senior care was very interested in what the Essex is looking at doing.
Okay, thank you.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, and let's see. Next is to ratify the chairman's signature of a change order in the amount of 4,000, sorry, I can't talk, $6,544.85 for the unanticipated brickwork on the public water supply well.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And just to let you know, that's over on Harry Holmans, right? It's that area there.
Yes, that's correct.
Um, and again, um, I'm not going to do the reviewing of the zoning board, oh, no, I'm sorry. Review and discuss recent letter from the zoning board of appeals regarding the future appointments of board members.
So the letter that was sent by the Board of Appeals is asking that if the selectmen are considering making new appointments to the Board of Appeals, that they loop back with the Board of Appeals first, just as a courtesy to get a recommendation. This stems from a situation where there was a member that we were trying to determine if they were going to re-up and, uh, they weren't communicating back to us. And at one point in time, one of the zoning board of appeals members suggested a new person. And that name got to the selectman. The selectman agreed that that was a suitable appointment and the appointment got made. But in that particular instance, we're being told by the Board of Appeals that there was not a full Board of Appeals discussion on that particular person. So they're just trying to underscore that in the future, if anything like that happens, they're asking the selectmen to just take a step back. They'll convene and give you a full recommendation. That's, that's all it is.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so we have two minutes.
Vote on that or you don't need to?
You don't need to do anything.
Um, so the next item is to consider a request from Nathan Woodman to use the Folsom Pavilion at the Centennial Grove to hold a fundraiser, ALS over ALS, ALS, sorry, on Saturday, November 8th from 1:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Rental fee is paid after the event. Um, the only comment I have about that is really regarding the condition of the grounds and making sure that there's not divots, because there was some ankle benders there when, last time I was walking over there. Is that something we can have somebody just look at and make sure that there's, because they're going until 10 o'clock at night. It's, it's dark, it's-
Yeah.
The trees have come out, roots have come out.
I mean, I can ask the DPW to look at the area.
That, that would be my only, um, so I make a motion to accept the requests from Nathan Woodman regarding the, um, use of the Folsom Pavilion at Centennial Grove on November 8th from 1:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Um, okay, quickly, I'm just going to, in this last one minute, I do want to just re- remind, have reminders for regular meetings. We have the regular board of selectmen meeting, which would be Monday, November 3rd at 6:00 PM on the third floor auditorium. And our fall town meeting, um, this is our fall special town meeting, will take place on Monday, November 17th at 6:45 PM at the Essex Elementary Gymnasium.
Can I just ask, make a note? Um, there was a criticism that we would be carrying, bringing some things forward at the fall town meeting. When did we establish the fall town meeting? It's been my understanding that it's been an equally weighted, um, meeting for many years and it's not, um-
It was, um, so, oh, I want to say it's six or seven years ago now.
Yeah.
Uh, people would bring up at a special town meeting, because it wasn't called the fall town meeting, uh, they would say that a particular item is really something that should have been on the annual town meeting, that not enough people are, are awake to what's going on at that special town meeting. Um, so the selectmen at the time brought to the town meeting a proposal to codify this thing called the fall town meeting. And it's now in the bylaws so that every voter should know that it's going to happen. And the intent of the people at the time was that anything is fair game because the town should know that there are two town meetings in a year. And that's how it all got set up. I don't know if people view it that way, but that was the intent when the selectmen looked at it.
Yeah, and you have how many, 30, 30-some articles on this fall town meeting?
Twenty-eight, I believe, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, there's plenty to do. Um, and if we did everything at, at annual town meeting, it would be multiple nights. We don't, it's so-
Yes, and, and there's sometimes housekeeping that you, you don't know about. And to wait until May, there are going to be things that fall apart, so.
And I think that I had always understood it to be that also, this is a, you know, when we do need capital, we need a vehicle, we need equipment, it's the time to do it.
Plus, every year before, there was a codified fall town meeting. We had a special town meeting anyway.
Yeah.
I think maybe there was one year when we didn't. I'd have to look at that.
Alva, when is the selectmen's meeting prior to the fall town meeting?
The 3rd of November and then-
No, what time on, on the 17th?
On the 17th?
Usually do like 5, 5:00 or 5:30. What do you recommend, Pam? Is it 5, 5, okay, 5.
Thanks for clarifying that. I just, it's a, I've always thought it was a known practice and, um, I get, I don't like hearing that being brought up again and again when it's become kind of-
Yeah, and in fact, it's not even a choice anymore. It has to be held.
Um, I've gotten concerns even about, you know, the zoning articles. And that's why when we got them originally, it, they were house, more housekeeping. And that's the part that housekeeping are not, it's not like it's changing rules. It's doing something because the state has told us we have to put it in or it's doing something that we may have found we didn't do correct from the Attorney General. Anyway, so next is our, um, our quarterly department head meeting to discuss coordination of town businesses with individual departments and reports. Um, and Teresa has asked for the school if she could go first. So Teresa, I'm going to grant you that.
I suppose I should have waited until you finished that sentence before I stood up. Could have gone the other way. Thank you, I appreciate it. Um, I'm filling in for Kate Koch-Sunkwiss tonight. Um, she wasn't available and neither was Jake, so you're stuck with me. I've done this before though. Thank you for your time and I appreciate being included here. Um, so I've, I've come with basically three topics. I'm going to start off with that which was requested. We received a email, um, the Essex representatives received an email from Brendan um, the morning of the 7th, which was when we also had our last school committee meeting, um, letting us know that you guys had discussed the Office of Campaign and Political Finance letter that had been issued and asking that we come prepared to speak to that, um, in particular to the follow-up, um, what would be coming out of it to ensure that doesn't happen again. So just by way of very, very brief background for people watching or hearing about this for the first time, um, a complaint was filed with the OCPF regarding district communication in the week lead up to the spring election, regarding communications specifically about the ballot. Um, in particular, it was an email that was sent twice, um, a web post, a little pop-up on the website and a Facebook post. Um, Superintendent Pam Bodrin and the school committee learned of the concerns, um, for the first time on the day of the election, but then later a complaint was filed with the OCPF, um, by a resident, I believe. Uh, the purpose of those communications was to let people know factually where things stood with the budget process, knowing that it was an override vote with two parts, the town meeting and the ballot vote. Um, the intent had been to provide factual information, but when the OCPF reviewed the complaint, um, it became very clear that there are distinctions between what's allowed, generally speaking, for passing a budget and what is, um, required when there's a ballot component to that. So this messaging was modeled after, excuse me, after messaging, similar messaging from the Manchester Memorial ballot vote for the debt exclusion, but that doesn't excuse it. The, the rules are the rules. Um, the finding was two-part, that, uh, the OCPF issued a letter with, um, a finding that the emails sent from the district were done using a targeted audience, basically, because they used the district's email distribution system to send it to people who have kids in the schools. Um, and that is not allowed for a ballot initiative in particular, that you can't use a targeted audience in that way. And the second piece of the letter was that while the information was factual, some of the wording could be interpreted as not fully neutral, which is, um, an interpretation and that was theirs, that, um, that could be the case, um, which is also not allowed, again, for ballot votes. So we've learned a lot about the distinction between generally passing a budget through the town meeting process, but also have, what's required separately for those ballot votes. Um, so there was indeed a technical violation of the regulations here. Um, that is beyond dispute, um, that is accepted. Uh, past issuance of the letter, there are no additional penalties associated with these findings, but, um, Pam was able to discuss them with OCPF personnel directly to fully understand, um, what's contained there and also to ensure a plan is in place that it doesn't happen again. So the plan is threefold at this point. Um, so OCPF has offered to serve as a resource in the future to review, uh, future ballot-related communications. So anytime there is a ballot question related to this, we can use them as a resource, have them review the, uh, materials in advance so that that can be fully signed off upon. There's no cost to this review at all. This is just provided as a service. Um, also MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, who we're working closely with right now, um, totally separately from the EES proj- project, is offering a roundtable event for superintendents because, uh, most building projects require a debt exclusion override vote with the ballot component there. Um, so they're, at the end of November, which happens to be really timely for us, are offering this roundtable, um, discussion training for all superintendents. Pam will be attending that. And then the third piece is critically now that our committee is more aware of the distinction between ballot and, and generally passing the budget, um, we can also be more aware and, um, on top of watching what goes out as well. So there's, there's an additional layer of oversight there that, um, we are now better trained. Again, no excusing a violation, but also there's a learning opportunity here. Certainly we've all learned and I think that the learning is timely given our, um, building project that's coming. Um, I certainly wouldn't expect the same mistake to happen again. And I don't think that if that were the case, uh, in any brief period of time, that the, um, lack of penalties would continue. I think that we'd find a different outcome. But at this point, that's what's been reported out to, um, our committee. Uh, the school committee had no objection with that plan moving forward. Um, and we are, we are well aware. So it is a mistake, but again, as I said, it's also an important opportunity for learning. So that's where we are with that. Do you have any questions on that before I move on to the next topic?
Um, no, just to make sure that it follows through so that the next group of school committee members understands, um, that this, you know-
Right, that this is part of the, the history and flow, absolutely. I think it's tricky because we don't always have a ballot part of it, so it's not something that always comes up. But now that we have, we can certainly make sure that that institutional knowledge continues forward. Um, so the second thing I'll report out on is the EES building project. That's probably the most, um, critical thing, uh, from my, uh, time management perspective right now, um, sitting on the school building committee certainly. It's a really busy time. We had an incredibly successful community meeting, number one. Uh, by my count, we had over 40 people who were not, um, on the school building committee, were not part of the design team and- and who were not teachers, and that was just in the room, plus another eighteen to twenty online, so that was very well attended. Importantly, it wasn't the traditional get-out-the-vote-pass-the-school-budget crowd, it was a really well-rounded group of people, people paying attention, and importantly, people who are going to participate in town meetings, which I think is really critical, and I know the school building committee agrees to get those inputs early on. Right now, we're dealing with three key decisions, as I'm sure you know, site selection, grade configuration, and design approach. So, for site selection, we have the three, we have the current site, we have the Apple Street town-owned parcel, and we have Memorial School Site. Grade configurations, I won't even get into it right now. Design approach would be renovate, renovate and add, or replace with new build, that primarily, it would be the three considerations on the existing site, if it were Apple Street, obviously, that would just be a new build from there. Right now, we've gone through the process as a group of creating criteria for site selection, that's been the top priority, to start to narrow this down, created criteria together, refined the criteria over time, then we started taking a look at all three sites in relation to that criteria, had a separate group, a subcommittee meeting to go through that in great detail, which was then presented at our last SBC meeting. At this point in the process, the school building committee is ready to move forward with removing the Apple Street site from consideration. The costs associated with what we now understand to be what is eligible and what is ineligible for reimbursement from MSBA in terms of infrastructure costs, anything off-site, like off the actual parcel, is not eligible for reimbursement. At a early glance, but not too early, we've done some due diligence here, it appears that those costs and the fact that that would be reliant on town projects as well, between the timing and the cost, it doesn't seem prudent to move forward with that. I know that the previous iteration of the Selectmen had brought that forth for consideration as well, so if you have input about that, that you would like the school building committee to consider in that decision, please send it by email so we have it in writing. We're going to be meeting next, I believe on November 6th, and at that time, we will take a vote, we took a straw poll, it was unanimous. We can't reduce the site selection too much further at this point, we're still considering the current EES site, and also the Memorial site, because those are both included in the statement of intent, or statement of interest, excuse me, when we submitted to MSBA, so we have to develop the Memorial site a little bit further. But looking at the criteria, we had a nice little visual, I'm sure we can get it to you if you didn't see it yet, but red, yellow, green, it's becoming pretty clear where the challenges might be, and that the current site is well-suited for this project, but we do need to explore all options. So, that's where we are with the building project. Do you have questions before I move on to the final piece?
I don't.
Do you?
Well, this came up earlier, so I think you should...
Yeah, I mean, has there been any, like, high-level estimates for costs of all three, in particular, the Apple Street site, just so that you have some data and some grounds for throwing out, other than it's just too expensive?
So, we've talked about that, that wouldn't come just yet in terms of high-level costs, we're not looking at prices just yet, few months, we'll probably have, within the next few months, we'll have some high-level costs, some high-level pricing, excuse me. In terms of the Apple Street site, it's not only the fact that it would cost whatever it would cost between widening the road, the water, bringing the water in, the possible land acquisition to get it safe, so it's not only the actual cost, but it's also the timing, and that that would involve additional town meeting votes for the, for town projects, and getting all of that, and time is money when it comes to building, as I'm sure you know. So, it wasn't only the dollar figure that brings us to reducing Apple Street. Additionally, I should have mentioned this, the input we received at and following the community meeting, we're not hearing anybody advocating for this, and the input we're receiving separately is, "Don't do this thing." So, it would be a little bit, we need a compelling reason to move forward, putting resources toward looking at Apple Street as a viable option, knowing what we know now. But it's not a dollar figure.
Well, it is a dollar figure, if time is money, and you need time, that adds to the cost of the Apple Street site, so it'd just be nice to have some 10,000-foot level from a professional to say, "This is rough estimates."
And...
All three, you know, just so that you can say, "This is why we didn't choose this site, and this is why we're ruling it out."
We did talk about that a little bit, it is just a little bit preliminary to give rough estimates on the sites, but it's something I can continue to bring up, and certainly I would expect to hear a little bit more about it, since we did discuss it at the last meeting before we take the vote.
Yeah, if it's that obvious that it's not viable, then it should be easy to get some rough estimates.
Might be.
So, can I, can I propose something, which is that maybe what we do in the communications meeting that we have next week possibly, is put together some of the discussion that we had at the last meeting, and share it with both boards of Selectmen, about just what the concerns are about just getting to that Apple Street site, because they're significant, and they do have cost implications. And as we go along, maybe there are some numbers that we can ascribe to the different elements of that, but I think we should articulate it in, on paper.
Mm-hmm.
So that we have record of it before this board, and before the Town of Manchester as well. Does that sound fair?
It does, I just want to be really clear about timing on this, so, because we will, we are likely to have a vote at the next meeting about this, so if you know you have input to share about this, please don't wait for that to happen, because then it's going to be tight turning around on that.
I think we want to see just a summary of the discussion that we had, and the concerns from the committee, and the people who are helping guide our work.
Right. And as a reminder, you can always review any of the meetings online, you can see the discussion in real time.
Yep.
If you need timestamps, email me, I'm glad to provide them anytime.
And I know that this is very similar to when we did the Memorial project, we were looking at a site out off in 127, and for the same reasons, there was, you know, a list of, a litany of reasons why you wouldn't want to change it. So, I get it, it does seem, as I was saying to Annie before you were here, just that the size of the lot, which is a few acres bigger, could give a bit more for the school, and...
Yeah. I mean, the building itself, the size of the building itself is going to have a lot to do with the square footage per student that MSBA will reimburse us for, but there's a lot to be desired, we have one member of the SBC who has said a few different times about an open, flat parcel to build on, there's a lot to be desired there. The challenges of Apple Street, and the, frankly, the difficulty of getting things passed for work on Apple Street is a real concern for the committee, for sure. But the site itself may be lovely, can we get it passed would be part of it, and is it cost prohibitive. So, I can definitely take that recommendation to put together the, something in writing for you guys to review.
And that's good for us to have at SBC.
Exactly.
So, we can do that in the communications.
Right, yeah.
Regarding the school, do you have more?
I just have, I just have a couple of updates, but that's, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to see, the numbers have gotten certified for the number of students, correct?
I'm not sure.
And then, one of the questions, as us getting together as a collaboration group, or what they call in the numbers crunching group...
Yep.
We have been waiting for the finance director to make adjustments to the projections that we're working off of, because she feels that they're going to be different, but I haven't heard anything. Are they hoping to have that before our meeting?
30th.
To the 30th. So, yeah, my understanding is that the finance subcommittee met today, and discussed an agenda, a proposed agenda, because the way our committee works at this point is that they have a charge to create an agenda for this, and then bring it to our school committee meeting tomorrow night for input. So, following tomorrow night's school committee input, I would expect to receive all of that information.
Great. Thank you.
And then, just a final, just for you to know, a couple important things coming up at school committee meetings, tomorrow night, we have our special education review, that'll be led by Allison Collins, but really, it was a leadership team effort, and that's always informative, people have a lot of questions, or don't always understand the special education program, the value that it brings, and also the costs associated with it, and how critical they are of a budget driver, so I would strongly recommend paying attention to that, either live or on replay if you can. And the other thing is that on November 4th, we will have the report out, our annual student assessment review, this is where we will have the leadership team report out on not only test scores that you hear about, and rankings that you hear about, but also other methods of understanding where the students are at, assimilated altogether, put all together in one, to really help us understand where our student body is at. There's a measure of accountability there, to be able to ask questions and understand different scoring, and, you know, MCAS scores and other internal measurements, but also to take a broader look and see where we're going and why, so it's a really important meeting. And that's November, excuse me, November 6th, no, November 4th.
And that's a regular school committee meeting, correct?
Yes, it is.
I'm glad to hear that we're talking about education, because we talk about budget all the time, but we don't talk about education very often, so that's great.
Well, at the risk of overplaying my hand, we also just had at our last meeting, the report out on the youth risk behavior survey, and those results can be found online in the discussion, you can watch as well, it's really enlightening to understand better what our students are facing, and how they're coping, so that's really important information.
Great. 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock for school committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please forgive me, I would normally stay, I'm not going to stay tonight, just...
Do you have any comments you want to add before?
I think I've said enough, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before the next person, I wanted to, for reminders, and I mentioned it earlier in the meeting, October 28th is the Conservation Commission meeting for the tennis courts, the board is posted, if you're interested in, I will be there as well. 7 o'clock.
That was the 28th?
28th, yep.
Okay. Rock, paper, scissors, anybody want to raise their hand? Okay, Christian, you're next.
All right, good evening, Christian Hassel, Chief Essex Fire. So, just here to go over recent achievements and everything else that was asked for. So, recently, we've fully implemented our First Do scheduling module, First Do is the program we got a couple months ago, and we're kind of working through the different modules to implement. So, scheduling a module is pretty self-explanatory, but it does allow for an online platform, which we haven't had before, so people can fill their shifts, or at least bid on their shifts a month out, and it's all digital, and everyone can see what's open and what's not open, so it's a good way to track. Right now, we are working on filling November shift and October, Monday through Friday is pretty much full, there's like one or two openings maybe, which is a significant uptick from where we were at before. We are covering the weekends somewhat, but definitely an area of opportunity to continue to work on. We have four members beginning in the Fire Academy this evening, they were online at the station when I left, so they're excited for that, and going to be a big win for the town, and for the department as far as operational ability to respond to all hazards events. The good news with that is some of the payroll cost for those members going through will be covered through a shared grant with the Manchester Fire Department, so we won't be on the hook for all the payroll hours, just some of them. We have a new hire that we just submitted to you folks, Ellie Crocker, we're excited to move her forward to you for approval. Ellie's been a part of the Explorer Program, and been at the department for, since she was born, basically. Tanker acquisition process, we are continuing to meet as a group, we have selected a vehicle that the group feels is the best fit for the department, it's a 3,000-gallon, single-cab vehicle, it's a stock vehicle, meaning we're not customizing anything, which is, again, a low-cost option to a custom truck. We're adding about 750 gallons of water capacity over our current vehicle, which is just helpful, given EV fires, any type of fire, it's just nice to know that you've got an extra little bit of water on there, so. We are currently finalizing pricing and equipment specifications, we're hoping this truck that we're negotiating on should be available in March, or at least that's what they're telling us right now. If all goes well, we will definitely be on the low side of the budget number we gave you, so that is also good, so that's kind of where that stands. Training highlights, last Thursday, we did vehicle extrication, it was hands-on training provided by New and Wind Fire Equipment, we had a really good turnout, we had some regional departments as well show up and kind of partake in that, it was cars on their sides, extrication, different tactics and different tools that you can use to do it, so really, really well done by the training committee. I have a Chief Officer Development Training Class coming up at the end of the month, it'll be no cost to the town, it's a conference in Connecticut that my primary employer is covering, so mutually beneficial. And then we have Officer One Training coming up for the rest of the department, this is, again, a session that will be funded through the regional grant with Manchester Fire, so no payroll cost to the town, but pretty good opportunity for a few officers to get the Fire Officer One credentialing. So, leadership development, we've initiated the development of a senior firefighter position, we're currently socializing it with, the Board of Engineers has reviewed it, they are on board with it, we're now socializing it with the other officers on the department, the intent is to support lieutenants and mentor future officers. As far as community outreach goes, we are developing a public awareness campaign around fire pit safety and etiquette. Our obstacles to current goals and objectives is really just bandwidth, it's the same story, we're addressing it, we are, I think we're moving in a great direction, it's just getting there, so. Expectations for the coming quarter, we're going to continue to implement the First Do modules, we're working on training and events and activities right now, we are looking to review and adopt updated ambulance billing rates, to bring us more in line with not high-end, but middle-of-the-road ambulance rates for the region. We are looking to identify a designated member to oversee the ambulance financials, so you heard from Peter Hoare a few weeks ago, he's a great resource for the department, he's got a significant amount of experience in private ambulance and just ambulance in general, so the goal will be to work with Pete, if he will agree to it, a little pressure, announcing it publicly, to just kind of be able to wrap things up in a much neater package, so that we can have informed discussions on kind of where we're going, where we're at, and better understand it, so that's the goal there. Expanding cross-training among key personnel, and launching a recruitment campaign, targeting Essex residents, targeting is probably a bad word, but we're going to focus on trying to get some local folks in the door, develop a cost model, comparing onboarding and maintenance cost for different roles, just so as we look forward to FY26 budgeting, FY27, where are we going? We know exactly where we're going, or we know our cost model a little bit better, we know who we can add, who we can't add, and the costs associated with it, so. We're going to look to develop that budget as well, and then our long-term, on the goals, not really anything there, and our concerns are just budget concerns, we're working on it, we want to work with you guys to make sure that we're... We want to work with you guys to make sure that we're moving forward and doing spend wisely. That's all I got. Any questions, comments, concerns?
I just want to thank you. Everybody has the bandwidth issue, and we know that in a small town like this, but seeing that, you know, seeing that you have more going through the academy and, you know, with Ellie Crocker going on, that makes me feel a little bit more, we're still small-town Essex.
Yep, yeah, yep.
Annie?
Yeah. First of all, it's incredibly kind for Peter Hoare to step forward on this.
I agree.
Yeah. Thank him for his kindness.
Absolutely.
The recruitment campaign, I'm wondering, you know, is there a way of targeting, and I'm sorry that I'm screwing that up. Folks who work from home, who have some flexibility to be able to kind of escape if they need to, or, I'm wondering, I mean, I'm just wondering if that's an angle you could take because there are a lot of people that work from home now.
Yeah, there is, and I think, you know, it's going to certainly be a case-by-case basis. We have folks who do work from home, a couple of them, but they're not able to pull away for anything and everything. It's kind of those higher-level calls, so, which is fine. I mean, anything will help, so I think that will be part of it. Technically, in Massachusetts, there's a state law that says you can't be penalized for leaving your work to go to a call fire department to serve your community.
So that's good to hear.
But state law and reality, you know.
Annie, if you were younger, would you do it?
I would, I would want it at 9:30 on Monday morning.
Yeah, there's certain meetings that I would love to avoid as well. So, you know, it's, I pick and choose my battles, you know, and I think most people would as well. So if you have that structure fire, yep, you're going to, you're going to be able to justify that to your employer pretty easily, so.
I also want to personally thank you. You guys have been very responsive to issues that have happened on my street and fast and effective and empathetic, so thanks.
Yeah, no, we appreciate that, certainly.
Okay. Peter, anything?
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Chief, I'll have you go next. Carla, I'm sorry, but you're in town.
Good evening. So, right from the top, on the police side, I'll do police and then segue into harbor. On the police side, recent achievements, we've had a lot of training accomplishments. Officer Megan Wantit is now a state-certified sexual assault investigator. Sergeant Bruce just recently created his, completed his lead-up basic supervisory liability class. Sergeant Wee Way and I completed the firearms licensing legal update course. Sergeant Davis completed the red dot pistol optics instructor course. And Sergeant Wee Way also completed a tactical instructor course at the Lynnfield Academy. That's so he can do more in-house training, so we'll have more of a cost savings, so we don't have to have instructors come in and teach us. And Officer Sodora completed the officer-in-charge class. Obstacles to current goals and objectives, same story, working within a limited budget, given the staffing issue and forecasting overtime needs, where we are one-for-one scheduling backfill. We did not budget for a vacancy. Our incidental overtime is running hot, but I can line item transfer from unused salary to slow that bleeding. Another line that's going to be running hot is the vehicle maintenance. That was scaled back significantly to about five grand, and I did ask for a reappropriation at the Fall Town Meeting. Example, our light tower that we use, it's roughly 20 years old, it's never really had an overhaul service. Those are worth like $50,000, so we just put about two grand into it, but we use that at the Santa arrival, at the landing, holiday tree. There's various community events that we do use that, so we do need to make the investment in that. Expectations for the coming quarter, I'd like to see our full-time vacancy position filled, either in the works or have interviewing and background completed. We're still looking for reserves, but they're just not out there. We have had some interest from retirees, given that they, they come with the understanding of they've done 32 years of nights, weekends, holidays, so they're not going to be, you know, banging down the door to work Christmas for us. But they can plug in here or there to offset some sick time, vacation time, so that is still an option. Long-term goals on the horizon, continuing to build and break down the budget to see where we need funds allocated so that there is a more transparent view of the fiscal needs. Currently, no concerns on the police side. Any recent grants, not so much a grant, but it was a NIRAC reimbursement for two officers that had attended a training for active assailant training that was over at Gordon College, and I believe Brendan did attend that, got to see it firsthand, so we were reimbursed for that. And that's it for the police side. I'll take any questions?
Just wondering whether or not the budget increased based on the number of additional, if we have additional tickets being issued. I know we did hear some, you know, concerns over the summertime with parking tickets, and if anything, court time increased.
So court time generally lags six months to a year behind. So you might get, you could, for example, you could make several OUI arrests this summer, you might not get court until next spring.
Okay.
So that's yet to be determined. That's kind of that number that can change fluidly, but there were a significant amount of, yeah, citations and arrests made this summer. So we could see a slight increase, but that's, should be built into the budget already.
Okay, great. Annie, Peter? Thank you. And our Harbor Master?
Yes, so recent achievements or recent status, we just finished pulling all the buoys out of the river. The boat is out. And we, the biggest, I'd say, achievement is we purchased the new software program of DaQwa, and that's going to be able to capture electronic funds right into the treasurer collector's office, reducing any cash or checks passing hands. It's fully automated. We'll have reports, we'll know exactly what's coming in, what's outstanding. Division of Marine Fisheries conducted a mooring field and clam flat inspection. The town did pass. We're organizing the existing harbor regulations into bullet point format for ease of reference, so people can have that on the website and just view that easier. Obstacles, again, working within this fiscal year's cut budget, but we are building it back up. It is a full-time, part-time need. The administration does not need to exceed 19 hours a week, you know, for eight to 10 months a year. It's realistic to address the needs of the department, and we're continuing to fix equipment defects and trying to keep a presence on the water with the limited salaries. Expectations for the coming quarter, we'll be going into winter mode, prepare for next season of moorings with DaQwa. We're going to be planning the budget with FinCom for fiscal year '27. I reached out to a captain that teaches the Coast Guard-approved classes. We're actually going to be hosting it here at Essex PD upstairs in the fire training room. That will allow me to attend, so I can become a certified Harbor Master, which is a legal requirement by having that class. Long-term goals on the horizon, we would like to expand the transient locations, increase the number of moorings and compliance with Division of Marine Fisheries. This is all increased revenue opportunities for the town, and Deputy Spinney has been able to contact between 15 and 20 people that will be accepting some new mooring locations that's part of that compliant location change with DMF. Concerns, training monies changes, the last-minute or mid-year requirements. For example, the Harbor Master Training Council said everybody needs to do 20 hours of in-service, and they just kind of dropped that mid-year, but we're not too worried about meeting that. We'll move some things around. And then the recent grants, as you know, we were awarded the FEMA Port Security Grant. We have 60 days from September 28th to accept that. However, FEMA has shut down online, so there's going to be some delay in contacting them, obviously going along with Fall Town Meeting. We were awarded roughly 278K towards a qualifying port security style boat. We'd met with FinCom and determined that the original safe boats that they were pushing were, they're too big and they were too expensive, so the boat we're going to go with is the Metal Shark, which is a cheaper option that still has adequate functionality. That boat is valued at roughly $370,000, with a town match of roughly $90,000 in that ballpark. Payment is due within 30 days of delivery, and that can take up to a year to build. And I can arrange a visit in Manchester, the yacht club over there, they have a Metal Shark boat that they use. It's similar, it's actually like two feet smaller, it's like a 21 footer. But if anybody wants to go see what exactly the type of boat we're getting is, they've had it for about 10 years as a service vessel and have had no issues with it.
When do we expect that?
It has to pass at town meeting for the match, but once we get the green light for that, we can tell Metal Shark, yep, we'd like to start building, and then it's within a year usually.
What was the DMF mooring relocation requirement for?
So they, if there are so many vessels moored within a certain footage of a clam flat that have stationary marine sanitation devices onboard, DMF has to come out and they have some formula that they use based on the amount of boats in that area, they would shut down the flat. But we're nowhere near having the amount of MSDs on vessels that would affect that.
Right, okay.
And Deputy Spinney had reached out to say, you know, the intent of where we would like to add moorings, and they're all deep-water moorings, so there's no issues with any clam flat confliction. It's not going to be mud moorings anymore, it'll be deep water.
Over by Canoma mostly?
Yes, and then we also mapped out the actual Gloucester Line, and we have a lot more water out there than we thought we did, so there's plenty of real estate to add moorings.
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys. Carla, it's because you're special.
Hello. Carla Christensen, library director. Good to see everyone tonight. I'll start with recent achievements. I have sort of four chunks to report on. The first, it seems hard to talk about it, but our summer reading update, because summer reading is what we do for months, and it was hugely successful, always is. We have a great staff, and we have the Topsfield Fair that provides a huge incentive for summer reading. So this year, we had 71% of kids who registered for summer reading actually completed and got that Topsfield Fair ticket and the food coupons. Very exciting. We had a pretty good teen turnout, 17 teens registered as well, and they get gift cards as an incentive. So it was a great summer, lots of fun. We had 17 programs or events with 345 people attending those. So that's sort of late June, July, and then early August. We culminated this year with an art show in August, and it was really wonderful. Up here, we transformed it into an art gallery. It was great, and we're especially thankful to the friends of the library for their support of the whole summer, but especially the art show. The next big sort of chunk of items is the financial and statistical reporting that I do to the state, so the Mass, the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners is the overseeing body in Massachusetts. And so we do two reports to them every year. The first one comes in August, where we report on the prior fiscal year. So in August, we reported on FY25, and it's, it's all, you know, circulation, usage, it's all those kinds of stats. The interesting ones for us are, our circulation transactions are up about 2% over the prior fiscal year. Our interlibrary loan, where we give and receive books all over the state as well as the country, are up 6%. We saw a 34% increase in the circulation of eBooks, so that's, that's digital reading, you know, via Hoopla or Libby, which are the two apps we use for that. That's interesting because eBooks are phenomenally more expensive than print books. I've talked actually at the same meeting about this before, so as that uptake goes up, we have to be more careful, right, about watching, making sure we have the eBooks, the audiobooks that our patrons want, as well as the print materials that people want. So it's always a balancing act. And we circulated 300 museum passes this year, which is really on par with the last two years that I've reported. In terms of programs, so thinking about the last fiscal year, we did 187 live programs and events. We had 2,483 people attend those, and that, that's really on par with the last couple of years as well. We, yeah, it's really on par. So, great year statistically for us. To go along with that, we report financial data to the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, and that actually happens late September, early October. This year, I was way ahead of the game, so I submitted all of our data in September. The good news is that we'll remain certified in Massachusetts by the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, and we'll continue to receive our very small amount of state aid that we qualify for. That will continue into FY26. All right, so the next kind of chunk are just a couple of important things that have been going on at the library. I started off talking about summer. So summer reading ends, we take a few weeks to breathe, and then hit the ground running for the fall. So we close on Saturdays in the summer because people are out enjoying this great place we live. So we restarted our Saturday hours on September 6th, and since then, we've seen an average of about 26 patrons per Saturday. We're only open for a couple of hours. Saturdays go up and down with the seasons, so that's where we are right now in terms of Saturdays. Our morning programs restarted, so there's storytimes on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays right now. Our adult book club restarted in September, and we had a full event of different September programs. I don't have any obstacles to report, but in terms of expectations for the coming quarter, so this is going to be now through the end of the calendar year, I have four teen volunteers working toward their high school requirement, both community service requirement and National Honor Society requirement, kids from both MERSD and Essex Tech. So it's been really great to have teenagers around. We all learn a lot from each other. So up next in programs for the fall, so far in October, you've seen, we've seen Remy Cube, drones, superfoods. This week, we have Historic New England coming to do a children's program. A Pet Loss is next week. November through December, we're doing a CPR class for teens, the peri-menopause class that's coming up, paper crafts, robotics, floral arrangements, and we're actually looking at potentially a concert for up here in December. Longer-term goals, sort of beyond the next quarter. Oh, one of the other achievements, let me just say this really quick, I should have, I missed this one completely. We were able to add a on-call substitute to our staff list, so this person is not a full-time employee of the town, but can sometimes substitute when we need it. And so that's been really, really, really helpful to have someone who works at another local library who knows all of our systems, same consortium, knows lots of the families and lots of the kids as well. So that's been really great to have a substitute for when we need a couple hours here or there. Now, longer-term goals. I'm looking to replace the Chromebooks. We have three Chromebooks that can be used within the library or circulated, and those, two of those have come to the end of their life. So I'm looking at replacing those either with this fiscal year's money or edging into next year. I'm looking at reviewing and updating our library emergency plan, so both sort of external emergencies, you know, weather, but also internal, you know, data systems, things like that, just to make sure we're in good, in good shape. That's part of my strategic goals actually as well. And the final longer-term goal is beginning to talk about and plan for our ramp to be updated, sort of fixed again. So Brendan and I had an email this morning where we can start having that conversation again and work on that kind of through the winter. All right, and I will wrap up. The only concern is really the one about scheduling issues. Last week, we had to move a program out of this room because we'd been double-booked. So it's, I know we're working on a solution. I just want to make sure people know that our librarians move mountains every day, and this, I really have to shout out, oh, Chief, oh, Chief's not here anymore, Chief, Officer Bruce as well, Sergeant Bruce, they were really helpful in helping us move over to the Public Safety Building for a program. But I just really want to make sure that we can stay on top of it and not have to move with, with very little notice. So I know, I know we can work together on that. All right, any, any questions? All right, any, any questions?
Sorry, I'll be real quick.
Yeah.
Replacing the Chromebooks. Chromebooks aren't being supported anymore, are they?
Um, if you buy a brand-new one, they are, yes. There is, it doesn't have to be a Chromebook, we, something to circulate.
Yeah, I just know that we have issues with...
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the ones that, you know, we all bought 10 years ago when it was a huge, huge deal, you know, those are all coming to the end of their life right now, right? No more operating system updates, so they're much harder for our patrons to use. It doesn't have to be a Chromebook, it just needs to be something really simple that people can use.
Yeah. And then just the other thing about leveraging that Public Safety Building room, is that, like, how does that work? Because I thought, I mean, I know it was, you know, a, a solution that kind of came at the, the last minute, but it's handicapped accessible, it's a great room, I just wonder how we can better, is it, do we have access, does anyone have access to that, that safety room?
As long as it's a program of the local government, could be the library, the school, any of the town departments.
And is that scheduled just like the other rooms are?
No, it's through, it's through the Public Safety folks. It's not, not through Town Hall.
Great. I just, I love that room. I think it's really nice and...
Yeah, it's great, and, and it gets people to the Public Safety Building who've never been there before. All right, thanks, everybody.
I was wondering, I, I am, the garden, the library garden.
Yes, so the garden, we met with Jeffries Creek last week, the Friends did. This is a, a project the Friends are managing, and they are talking about a second or third week of March groundbreaking.
Second or third week of March?
Of March, yeah, so we want to get through winter.
Because my only concern really is the, the loss of some parking spaces, especially when you're really busy.
Yeah, I mean, it's a loss of the spots that aren't parking to begin with. That's the hard thing about that, is that people make up their own, and then they drive into each other, and they back into each other, and, yeah, yeah, I mean, well, the five that are official out there will, yeah, will be replicated.
Okay.
But it does, it gets to be a little bit of a zoo, yeah. We've, we've all seen it on both sides.
Correct.
So, the police are very helpful, and I want to say thank you that they're not here. They are always really helpful in those instances, too.
Thank you, Carla.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Carla.
Next question, just about the licensing.
One second, I have one more person, sorry. I know, I thought, she was the last one. Jody, do you have any comments for the meeting?
Sure. As far as Finance Committee? We are working on the implementation of the ClearGov software. Conversion plans and training are happening now. Michaela and I are taking the training. This is a piece of software that's going to Fall Town Meeting for approval, but ClearGov has taken the risk on us, and they are actually doing our implementation and conversion prior to, hopefully, the approval of this at Fall Town Meeting. This will really streamline our budgeting process. As you know, last year, we really struggled with the budgeting and the budget Finance Committee book, and this will be a tool used by the Finance Committee, the Town Accountant, and all department heads. So, again, we'll be training now, Michaela and myself are training, then we'll train department heads, and then the Finance Committee will have access. This will help, again, get through things like your vehicles, inventory, needs. There'll be places to upload documentation, contracts. It's a, it's a big, big road process. We are, of course, working on funding sources along with BZ for the Fall Town Meeting, and our budget season is ramping up. The Finance Committee is currently reviewing the final numbers for FY25 budget, and then meeting with their liaison departments to review what happened last year and start the budgeting process for FY27. That budget's due by January 11th at the, the very final date, but we're striving to get something done hopefully by year end. We also are striving to put together a tax talk, too, for January, depending on the workload and what we see as the needs of the community as far as what they need a better understanding of. And as you mentioned before, we have our numbers crunching group with MERSD on October 30th. They'll be looking forward to that, to see what they're looking at for their budget. Our challenges are always fitting in our budgets within the limitations of Prop 2.5 levy limit, especially the numbers that we're seeing from the school that we received last year, and I did speak to the superintendent after the community meeting, and she felt that there weren't going to be many adjustments to those projections, so we know it's going to be challenging. EDC, we've, they've trined the utilities in at the pavilion for both electricity and the tight tank. They've been trined and backfilled. They are still waiting on wood that's being sown for the roof of the restroom. And we are working together with the Chamber to create a visioning session for businesses and property owners regarding our downtown mixed-use district. What could be done? What are people looking for? What has been approved in the past? What properties have liquor licenses, the numbers of feet, sewer flow, water, what are the wants and the needs of the residents? And we are meeting again with Chamber in January to have further discussion on that topic.
Thank you, Jody. And Bob, I'm so sorry. Would you like to give the Essex Tech...
Good evening, and thank you for inviting me. I've done three or four of these, and I always walk away feeling like I haven't provided you with enough information. So I did, let me speak into this. So I did ask Assistant Superintendent Riccio to present me with some information or some, a request for some information that might be a little bit more comprehensive for you. And I think you received it, did you? Good. Are there other people besides the folks that are sitting here that are watching this that I should read these one by one and go over them? I don't mind doing that, it won't take very long. Or, how, how would you like to handle it?
If you have some high levels that you can just give as far, high levels, any achievements or concerns that you may have?
I don't have any concerns, no. Dr. Riccio is one of the hardest-working people I've ever met in my 45 years in career in education. We're just very fortunate to have her. She's a, a workhorse, and she never gives up, she's a perfectionist, and as you read on, I'm, I'm looking at these now. She, she, we're just very fortunate to have her.
Does anybody have any questions regarding Essex Tech?
No.
The only question I had was about the lottery system, and will we get more specifics on that? The lottery system is changing, and I just wondered if there would be more specifics...
The lottery, the lottery system is, goes into effect next year, and it'll be, you know, it's going to take years, a few years to work it out. She, we opted for a blind, a blind lottery system. It's not what we've had in the past, but it's, it's going to take a while.
So can, can it be that, if it's done by a lottery, like, could it be, we could go year, a year or multiple years without a student from Essex being able to get accepted?
Multiple? No.
No, the, the, the system is going to guarantee each town a minimum number of students, from my understanding.
Hopeful that it's going to guaran, we're hopeful that it's going to guarantee, yes.
Okay, so I, when, when that's hammered out, I'd like to see how that works.
She already does, she already does an excellent job of making the process work, to the extent that I would say, in many ways, we're already doing it, at least at our level of, of our school. We'll see what happens. I can keep you up to date, you can always, always ask me questions, send me questions through PM, and I can, I can answer them for you. I, I know she also did, we spent, I, I've, we've been up in, my wife and I have been up in Nova Scotia for three or four weeks, we just got home. So I did a lot of this work via email over the, with her, but she, she did express, she would like to have folks come in, selectmen, city council members, and I might talk to her about putting together some type of a, what's, you're, do you all work? You do, right, you all have jobs.
But she does do, I think that there's some type of thing that she does for municipality in January, where she invites each of the member towns. So maybe that would be, just to be able to get the dates so that...
Yeah, it wouldn't be just, you know, there are several cities and towns, and everybody wouldn't, wouldn't be able to make it, but I'll, I'll mention that to her, talk to her about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a great school. They're always working hard to make it even better than it already is, so we appreciate your support, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're having our Green Crab Summit there on Friday.
Again, you know, I'm approaching, I'm approaching that, I don't want to tell you what age it is, but...
We're having our Green Crab Summit there on Friday, that Senator Bruce Tar chairs, and join us if you can. All-day affair.
Yeah, I caught some of that, I, I just didn't hear you.
I'll send you some.
Okay. I really do need to make, visit the hearing.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, so we have a still a few items. I'm going to take public comment, so that we can get that done, and then we'll move back to the agenda items. Anybody have any public comment?
Hi, good evening. Mike Strowman, Maple Street. I'm here to speak to the tennis court update. Brendan, thanks for that. I just was, you know, every time I hear some talk of this project, I hear little things that sort of rub me the wrong way, and tonight I heard another one about, you know, discussions on warranty lifespan of this court. Reference was made to the proposed land being maybe good for five years, and meanwhile, the, the concrete plan being, you know, warranted for 30 years. I'm not aware that Western Sampson guaranteed or warranted any, any plan, if they have, good for them, but can anybody tell me whether that's in fact the case, or?
They just talked about in general that concrete would have a much longer life expectancy.
No, I understand, that's, that's what I expect, but at the same time, to be a balanced approach to this and commenting on it, I do expect the asphalt and, and the six to eight fill with that, which is corresponds to the concrete depth fill, also be viewed in, in terms of lifespan, typical lifespans. And these numbers are all over the board, you go online. The, the asphalt, gravel asphalt version, you can see from anywhere from 15 to 25 years, the concrete reinforced 20 to 40 years. So, the numbers are sort of all over the place, but, I mean, in fairness to both alternatives being proposed, I think it's, you know, it'd be helpful to have balanced presentation of that information. Otherwise, people are misled to believe one, one site, one process is woefully inadequate in terms of design. Certainly, the, the post-tension concrete is prohibitive and costs very, very much money, and that's probably why a lot of municipalities don't rely on that. And I think most of those systems are, you know, used in well-funded institutions, academic institutions, colleges, perhaps private clubs. So I, I don't think this is, I think this sort of an outlier is in my mind for use in Essex. As you know, the, the concrete proposal that came in also expanded upon the original design proposed by expanding to 24 feet between the courts, 12 feet over what was originally, was there now.
And Mike, we understand that, this is, but we're, I think to go to the COMCOM, we want to have the larger scale so that we can scale it back versus going with the smaller scale. And when I say smaller scale, and I, in yours, you're, you're saying that, you know, it could have a better lifespan, and it may, but we also are, know that we're in a flood lane, a flood zone there. So, all of that is great. Is there anything additional you wanted to add, or, just because we still have a whole bunch of meeting left to do?
Yeah, very quickly, I mean, I would just request that in the presentation of the Conservation Commission, that they be, be informed that the selectmen support either alternative, provided they meet the bottom-line requirement that no subsurface disposal occurs, and that it minimizes impacts. The cost and lifespan issue aside, each alternative would meet the project purpose, which is to build a couple of tennis courts there, and one isn't weighed more than another. And otherwise, the, the plan to refine and amend later on is going to be cost prohibitive, not cost prohibitive, but more costly, time-consuming, over into next year, require additional consulting, filing with the Conservation Commission. So I would just advocate, given the workload of the commissions, that they be presented with the most viable, reasonable proposal to go forward with and approve, rather than asking for an order of conditions that everybody thinks is going to have to be amended automatically next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we still have to vote on town meeting, but is everybody okay if we move to licenses?
Oh, God, yeah.
So that we can get the license. Okay, so I'm going to start with the annual alcohol, actually, yes, I'm sorry, I am going to start with that. The annual all-alcohol restaurant license, this is a transfer from ABCC for Wood Fired LCC Doing Business as Riverspend, Lindsay Bergeron, 35 Dodge Street. I'm making a motion.
You don't need, you've already approved it.
Oh, we already approved it, so now it's just, we had just had to sign it, I'm sorry. So the licenses are in our packet, and we signed that. And...
So all of the paperwork that was in question is all ironed out and good?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so then we have the one-day wine and malt license, ales over ALS, Nathan Woodman. So this is running, this is over at the Folsom Pavilion, which we already approved. It is from 1:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Do we care, do we care about the 9:00 PM? This is a lis, like, this is a license. Do we care about the, do we care about that there?
I'm pretty sure we approved it last year for the same thing.
Yeah. Okay, so moved.
Second, but I have a question.
Yep.
And I'm only asking this because I would do the catering on the side. And we usually have a four-hour window for alcohol, so this is a, an eight-hour window for alcohol, right?
Not really. It's, the event goes from 3:00 to 8:00. I apply for 1:00 to 9:00, just to have time to set up and break down.
Yeah.
So that's five hours, but, yeah.
Yeah, in the future, I would like to know when, like, what the length of time for alcohol service is, just because that makes, it makes a difference for me to just know. So, I'm ready.
Okay, thank you. Do we want to amend it before we vote? No? Keeping it at 1:00 tonight? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the next one is for Riverspend. Now, this is for a wedding that is on the 12th of September. So, I'm, a couple of things. I, I have the license in front of me. I have to switch glasses so I can read something up close, sorry. So this is going to be, you've got 3:30 to 7:30 introductions... So this is going to be, you've got 3:30 to 7:30 introductions, speeches, and first dance. Then 7:30 to 9:30 is-
Five, 5:30 to 9:30, sorry if that looks like a three.
I know it says that there, but this is what it says here. That's why I'm saying it.
Mine says 5:30 to 9:30.
Is that 3:30 or 5:30?
My five looks honestly like a three.
That one.
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying. It, you know what happened? The five joined the line above it and it looks like it's completing the three.
Exactly.
Okay, so I'm just going to make that look like a three?
Down below where it says time of event from two, 5:30 to 9:30.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
I, I really thought you were pulling the wool over our eyes. I am a bit concerned with it, an eight-piece band outside in the tent. Is there any reason that this can't be done inside? The band anyways?
So they are requesting that the entire event be underneath the tent.
And this is next year, 2026?
Correct. So from 5:30 to 7:30, it's introductions, speeches, first dance, and there will be a combination of DJ and the band for light dinner music. And then from 7:30 to 9:30, it will be the band for dancing.
It's just that this doesn't fit our policy, outdoor policy at all. And it is going to be outdoors in a tent. Do you have any idea how many will be in attendance of this wedding?
It's going to be roughly 175.
So 175 attended. Is that, is that allowed? I thought the premises was ninety?
Can't have that many people inside.
Inside.
Can't have that many people inside. Okay, any questions from others?
It is September, which is still a nice month, but, you know, I mean, it's not like it's July. But yeah, I mean, what do we shut off at, eight or 8:30?
We shut off four hours and we shut off at 8:30. We're also, it's not supposed to be a full band. So I guess I'm just concerned about what the, if we, if we approve this now, what the, you know, what the ramifications for the neighbors are going to be. That's a long time. It's, it's a long time for an eight-piece band.
Or the next event.
Or the next event.
What do you mean by next event?
Well, if we-
Next wedding, the next, next person who wants to do outdoor entertainment for that many hours.
In that late.
It's a, it's a Saturday night. We know it's coming. I, I don't have an issue with it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't either. We'll wait and see what the neighbors say, if it's a legit problem. I'm willing to risk it.
We can have side walls on the tent. We can ask the band to play at a-
All the slow dance songs after 8:30?
And Lindsay, I get that, but it's September. It stays light until 8:30 anyways. So I, I can't imagine a wedding with 175 people are going to say, oh yeah, put the, put the walls down, we don't mind. That's just my concern. And my concern is the volume of music.
What kind of band is it?
So it has two singers, two saxophones, a guitarist, a bass guitar, a keyboard, and drums.
Okay.
Do you want me to take a vote? I, I'm on the fence, I really am. I'm, I'm, just don't want to start up that whole-
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Would it make a difference if we pulled it back to end at like nine or 8:30?
Nine.
Nine?
I think nine is reasonable.
The policy's 8:30, but yeah, nine is fine with me. I mean, we've been, you know, under this sort of restriction for outdoor noise for several years now. There have been no problems whatsoever. Maybe we can start to migrate it a little bit.
We, we can try that. I just am concerned about this location and where, where the-
Yeah, I know. I totally, I totally understand. It's a trial balloon and we'll just have to wait and see what happens. And if there's a problem, then, you know, it won't happen again.
So, so this is for September of next year?
Yeah.
And you came with a compromise of nine, which I think is gracious. And I wonder if, you know, like, are we going to see more requests for nine?
So I can tell you this, I will be coming forward at some point with music for dinner under a tent, but entertainment inside. So this is truly not our norm, as you know. I would prefer to have the entertainment inside, however, this, this is just too big.
Yeah.
And-
Lindsay, do you think you'll have any more requests like this prior to Sep, this event in September?
So I have a, I have a Sept, early September, it's before this, and it's a tented wedding, but it's going to be dinner music and then entertainment inside.
Yeah.
So there'll be a small-
But nothing outside in a tent in July or June?
We've got a long time. We've got-
Yeah.
A long time for her to hopefully get bookings. And I think that it's just, again, it's not the policy. And it's 175, it's a, that's a good-sized wedding.
And I will say this, you know that I don't come and ask often. I really have been working on, you know, I'm thankful to have my ceremony music. And at most, I'm looking for dinner music under a tent and then whatever entertainment they have inside. So this, this is truly my first request for a-
Because of the size?
Yeah.
So-
And it's a local family. It's, it's, it's a burnum. So I'm trying to support a local family.
That aside, I will just tell you that Long Hill, you know, your competitors, they shut down at nine and it, it's, it's a very nice compromise with the neighbors and it works.
Yep.
So, I mean, I'm just telling you from what I see on the stands that-
And this is truly not our norm. You know, we cater to the smaller-sized weddings.
Yeah.
I'm with Annie.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to accept the Riverspend request for an outdoor entertainment for September 12th, adjusting it from 5:30 to 9:00 PM.
And we would need the applicant to make that a change on the application because if it's not done that way, then the board is actually setting up a conflict with what was requested and that triggers a public hearing. So you'll make that change?
I'll make that change, but can we do five to 9:30? So you need to back it up an hour. So that means their, their ceremony is going to start earlier. So if we're going to shift it off by a half an hour, then I have to back it off by a half, so it'll be, have to be five to 9:30.
That's fine.
Is that okay?
I thought you were talking about nine.
I'm sorry, five to nine, yeah.
Right, not 9:30.
Not 9:30, five to nine.
So do we amend the motion pending?
I think she needs to come make the change.
Right over here. So five to nine. At Riverspend Essex Marine LLC. All those in favor? Oh, actually, I have to make a motion. You have to.
Wait a minute. Would you fix wherever it is there? And initial? And I guess I would just, perhaps we revisit the noise ordinance at some point in the next few months to just see if it's, if nine o'clock is acceptable rather than 8:30. And that's just me asking, not, it's not, you don't necessarily have to do it, but.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye. Just have to clue the front page. Just the front.
Yeah.
There's another one.
Oh, there's another entertainment license. Okay, so-
Not mine though, right?
No.
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate the opportunity.
That's the town meeting.
Okay, all right. So, sorry about that, Nathan. So for one-day entertainment license, for Ales Over ALS, Nathan Woodman, for the, at the Folsom Pavilion, Saturday, November 8th, 2025, between the hours of 1:00 PM and 9:00 PM.
So moved.
What type of entertainment are you having there?
It's on there.
So Nathan, it was a marching band. I'm kidding.
See. It's a band. Live band.
Straight from a burning bus?
Amplified band.
Barefoot.
So please, amplified band, what does that mean?
Uh, live band with amplifiers. I can give them, and they're called the Headlines.
And they're going to be playing the entire time from one to five? Because again, that sounds-
No, 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 the, the event goes three to eight. Right, music stops at eight. If they do an encore, it goes to like 8:20.
I'm sorry, music starts at eight?
No, stops.
Stops.
Yeah. And they don't play the entire time, they take breaks.
Any comments?
It's in November, right?
When there's no leaves on the trees.
Yeah, and there's nobody outside. And windows are shut.
Okay. It's just the hours also, eight, that's a seven-hour.
Right.
Yeah, but they're not playing for seven hours. They're starting?
Yeah, the, the event is live, the application says one to nine, the event is live from three to eight.
And will the band be set up inside the pavilion?
Yes.
Okay. Take a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nope, that's next.
What's up, Peter?
Did you sign those?
No, we have, we have one more, right? The appointment?
Cultural Council.
Okay, so this is the Essex Cultural Council? Now, did-
Yeah, this is all signed, but that-
Did somebody request that she get, did she just send an email? How did we get her?
We got her from Robin Cantor, the chairman of the committee.
Okay.
And Allison, she spoke with Allison and Allison expressed interest.
And is there others on the committee? I just don't want another issue like the zoning board.
I don't think it's the same issue at all.
You don't think there will be the same issue?
No.
Okay. So I take a motion to appoint Allison Taylor for a partial three-year term ending 6/30/28 for the Essex Cultural, Essex Cultural Council?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
What is a partial three-year term?
It means that it didn't start at, at 7:01, it started mid-term.
Okay, thank you. Aye. Thank you.
Okay, now we get the best part. I'm just checking my checkmarks.
Can we just do it here and shut everything down? Executive session?
There's no executive session.
Those were just the minutes for the-
No executive session.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
We're not, okay, so then we're talking about the fall town meeting?
Yep, and I put together the warrant, I added in the nine planning board proposals. The planning board has back-checked the, what has been added, articles one through nine. And you've all already seen the other articles at a couple of the past meetings. So are there specific questions on the warrant?
I, I don't have any. Peter in?
I thought I did, but maybe not.
I did have a question about, you know, we got a lot of back and forth on, you know, on email about the planning board articles. And I just, I just wondered how much impact we have on those or how much influence and does, do you know what I mean? I just, there was a lot of volume-
It was more for you to understand the technical aspects of it than anything else.
We won't have-
They're going to come, they're elected officials, they're going to come and support it.
Right.
They might ask you your opinion, but, you know, it's more, it really is usually more on the, on the planning board in a case like this.
Right, so-
But if there was an article that was going to be a change of our zoning, we may say, we could have said, okay, this is too deep, it should wait till May for an annual town meeting, not the fall town meeting. Instead of, that's why I'm saying a lot of it was housekeeping. The change to, you know, how the board has the alternates.
It's itself and all that, yeah.
It's, you know.
The only thing that really needs to happen is the 3A vote.
Yeah.
And it's on there.
But there's no expectation that any of us have to speak to any of these things because-
No.
That ain't my-
Nope.
I just, they're hard to understand sometimes.
You're allowing it on, on the warrant.
Okay, so I'm going to just get down the list and do the votes, okay. Entertain a motion to hold the fall town meeting Monday, November 17th, 2025?
Is this our state the name or no? This is just a regular vote?
It's a regular vote, yeah.
Today's the 25th, right?
Yes.
Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Entertain a motion to vote to open the warrant for the November-
Just a typo, yeah, 2025.
Um, it's, November 17th, 2025, fall town meeting?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote to add articles for the November 17th fall 2025 town meeting per draft warrant presented at this meeting as a revised-
Well, no, there's no calls for revision, so as presented.
As presented, sorry.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Entertain a motion to vote to close the warrant?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote to approve, I take a motion to vote to approve the warrant?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And take a motion to vote to sign the warrant or?
Well, there's no changes.
There's no changes.
Sign the warrant.
So we can sign the warrant. So I have the warrant here and we all start changing, signing?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So any revisions that happen after this date, Brendan, would be made at the meeting?
Well, the warrant provides general articles that the motion gets more specific on. So there won't be any changes to the language of the article itself, but the motion could go in a number of directions. And at your next meeting on November 3rd, we're going to go over the motions-
Yeah.
And go through the options so that you have an idea of which direction it could go in. But by the time we get to the fall town meeting, the motions are nailed down and we usually provide those to the motion readers. But the articles themselves will not change, cannot change after you sign this without reopening the warrant.
So I think just one thing that really I did not like and didn't appreciate about the spring town meeting was that the, the motion language about, I think Butch and Susan's property had so many specifics in it, but it wasn't in this. You know, it wasn't in the warrant.
Right.
And that-
But it never is.
I, okay, that doesn't mean it's right.
You're bringing up a point.
Yeah, it, there were so many specifics in that motion that I felt like it was really hard for, for, not employees, for-
Laymen?
For residents to know, what am I voting on? What am I debating here at the, at the microphone? So when we get into stuff like that, I, I wonder is there a way? And then, and then there was a question about what is the motion language? And it wasn't, we weren't able to release it before the meeting. And I just, I don't think that's fair in a town, if a town meeting is supposed to be approving something. And I'm wondering if we can do something differently so that it, it's out there so that people actually know what the language of that motion is.
Well, I would say it depends on, are you proposing we do that for every motion? Because now you're-
For something like that, that was, I mean, we could discuss it as we go through.
Right, so I would say this, when you see the draft motions at your next meeting, if you flag any of those as we need to have handout, that's something that you could- that's something that you could...
Oh, okay.
Request.
And then the other thing is, I remember for Manchester Town Meeting, we used to have, oh, Peter, if you didn't, you have to assign this one. We used to have to, people who were advocates for or against something, used to have to submit the materials to the moderator before the meeting. Is that also a practice here?
No, so town meeting is governed really by the tradition of each community.
What is this, is this you?
Yeah, that's on me.
Essex does not have that requirement or that tradition, the moderator could institute something like that.
Yeah, but they don't have anything now.
No, there has never been.
So if you wanted to provide information and you were not a town sanctioned committee, right, you were, you know, advocates or something, where does that, does that material have to be handed out before?
It, we allow people to leave that on a table when you first come into the school. It's not put out with the official materials...
Right, okay.
Of the town, that has come up before, and people have done that before.
Yeah, I, yeah, and it's always a surprise, so it's like, yeah, I just wondered.
It's allowed, yeah.
Yeah.
So just wanted to ask, we did get the, in your packet tonight, the Public Works Department, the Town Clerk, and the CPC, did anybody have any questions regarding those?
No, but do those go into the minutes?
No, not per se, they don't.
Oh, I, I think they should, because everyone else is on the record, and, and the thing that I was concerned about from the DPW group of things was, oh, there's a 61,000 potential cost in the spring, right? Like, just something to know, and then the cemetery thing?
I mean, that's their report, yeah.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, I'm just wondering, does the state, is the state looking at any sort of, like...
The state? I doubt it.
No, but like rescinding that, because you're going to just keep buying up land, towns have to keep buying land to put bodies, I mean...
But you know what, so I had said this last time, we didn't really talk about it this time. I am starting to see locally them having those things where you put the ashes in, you know, like they're up, they're not in the ground, they're up.
And there's multiple.
And there's multiple, yeah. I, you know, you can't, where are we going to put the land, you know, where is the land going to be? That's the hard part. I do know from Tuckford, my parents' gravesite is for, I forget how many, but it's...
Six, usually.
No, it's, it's higher than that, because they have the double lot, and so it's, it's higher, that, they did it so that all of their children could be buried there if they got cremated.
Wait a minute.
So in the same grave?
Oh.
Yeah. Same plot, yeah.
It's not stacking, because it's only in a little box this big.
Yeah, it's the same plot as where the body would go, but you, because it's, they're so small, you can put a whole bunch of women in there.
Right.
They have a limit on how many they can stick in there.
But, so I just, I, I don't, I, I think Spring Street though does still have locations, but I've always...
Ten years, they think they have ten years, but still.
I know.
Yeah?
So is that something that we actioned, the DPW commission, to say, hey, think about what it is you're going to do?
Big, big flat lot.
They reported it to you, so I assume they're thinking about it.
Okay.
We don't need any services or any, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, no gas or water?
It doesn't even need to be flat, though.
Okay, I just want to say my last statement, which is... Any unanticipated items?
I don't have anything.
No.
I have a question on this email, we're discussing the school, the new school, renovated school, whatever is a possible shelter. When is that meeting, is that like tomorrow or the next day, or is it?
No, I had put out some dates this week, and the superintendent did get back to me to say that she would look at the dates, but I haven't heard back yet.
Okay, so that's, nothing's happening then?
No meeting yet, are you, is that something you're interested in?
Well, I didn't know whether I missed something and it was going to be tomorrow morning, next day.
Nope, nope, there were only a proposal for, you know, certain dates, but there, I haven't heard anything, I don't think it's going to be anything this week.
So before I motion to adjourn, I did want to ask you, with the school, if the school building is going to be where it's located, what happens for town meeting? Like, where could we possibly have it if the school was under renovation? I know that that's down the road, but it's not too far down the road.
You would have to go to, you could probably go to another facility, school facility in Manchester if you had to.
Okay, so we could do that, or, I didn't know whether or not anybody's thought about, can we do it in the fire station in the bays, or, you know, like...
You, you could.
All right, so I just think that we all should just think about what's going to happen.
You could do it outside, we've done that before.
I love that.
Yeah, unless it's raining.
It was great out there.
It was good, it was May, we were lucky.
So I'll take a motion to adjourn. The time is 8:35?
We don't need to adjourn yet, do we?
So moved.
What's the matter?
No, for after the meeting.
Okay, are we done?
We're adjourned, fade to black.